All right, Baltimore City Council Ways and Means Committee. We are back for ordinance 24-0521, ordinance of estimates for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2025. Eric Costello, councilman from the 11th District, chair of the committee. Joined to my right by Councilman James Torrance, 7th District. To my left, Councilwoman Odette Ramos, 14th District, and Councilman Ryan Dorsey, 3rd District, member of the committee. Mr. Comptroller, if you could please introduce first and last name for everyone on your senior team here that's going to testify in their position title. And then, how much time do you anticipate needing for your...
Mr. Chair, I will be disappointed if we go past 15 minutes.
I'll hold you to that.
Yeah.
The disappointment part.
One quick indulgence. We have a slide relatively early in the presentation that has our org chart, and I was going to wait and introduce the team when the org chart is up.
That's fine. Yep, thank you. Take it away, Mr. Comptroller.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Chairman Costello, Councilwoman Torrance, Councilwoman Ramos, Councilman Dorsey. My name is Bill Henry, and I am the comptroller for Baltimore City. Normally, this would be when I would introduce my team, but I'm going to put a pin in that until we get to the org chart. And now, I get to actually test and make sure that the clicker works. Yay! Okay, so what you have up on the screen is the official mission of the comptroller's office. The TLDR is, we're the chief accountability office. We're here to keep an eye on the mayor and the agencies and make sure that they are spending tax dollars as effectively and efficiently as possible while making sure that government, specifically local Baltimore City government, is as open and transparent as possible. I'll take this opportunity to also welcome Councilman Cohen and Vice President Middleton as well. Next, there we go. That's our org chart. Hmm, I guess I hadn't thought about the size of the screen relative to the size of the font on it. So it's really helpful that this is the point where I'm going to turn around and introduce members of my team. I will ask that you... Oh, no, I can see it. I'll ask that you wave when I call your name and smile and look like the helpful, wonderful staff of the comptroller's office that we all try so hard to be. First, we have Erica McLammy, our deputy comptroller. Then we have Celeste Amato, the chief of staff. You can see behind me on the screen that the org chart is divided up so that all of our staff report up to me through either Erica or Celeste. Then behind me, we have Casey Kelleher, our director of policy and communications; Michelle Derikot Coleman, chief of fiscal services; and then, in the, what some people refer to as the cheap seats, but I think of as prime heckling territory, we have, working inward from the aisle, Simon Etta, director of telecommunications; Christine Griffin, deputy director of policy; Eric Evans, director of real estate; Michelle Josie, director of accounts payable; Charmaine Callahan, head of the municipal post office; Tandy Mung is the deputy city auditor. She's here representing Josh Pash, the city auditor, who is unavailable today. Behind Tandy, we've got Audrey Quarles. Can we see... Normally, we refer to her as the general. Audrey Quarles is the head of BOE operations in central office; Tony Badon, deputy director of real estate; then we have Nia Go Van, deputy chief of staff, and Tim Goldsby, assistant deputy comptroller. And that concludes the team members who are here and who will be testifying if you ask specific questions that I can't answer off the top of my head. Then, let's see, let's go on now to... Eh! Do, 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 do. All right, next slide. All right, executive direction and control. Service 130 supports our executive direction team. This service reflects a modified budget for BOE submit, which is now fully implemented, and we are focused on fine tuning and maintenance. So far this fiscal year, we have processed over 2,900 BOE submissions through this system. By the end of fiscal '24, our office will be launching the next phase of board of estimates modernization, and that is a new BOE dashboard that I will be sharing in the next slide. Yes, so this is another case of, if it's actually at your computer, the print is legible. This is a sneak peek about the next step in BOE submit, which is the public dashboard. This dashboard will include all approved contracts, settlements, emergency procurement, personnel items, everything that comes through the BOE. You can narrow your search by agency, council, district, or cost. It's still in draft form, though, so we would love to get some feedback. If you've had a chance to play with it, let us tell us what you think. Next slide is Service 131, audits. Audits maintains a... I think it... We're maintaining a current level of service. Sorry, my computer, for some reason, keeps slipping ahead to the end of the slides instead of the ones that I'm actually trying to talk about. The audit's maintaining its current level of service, 6.4 million. This includes a modest increase to the travel and training expenses needed to support audit's mandated peer review. We're continuing to track the percentage of recommendations of performance audits implemented by agencies. This figure is hovering slightly above our goal of 70%. All right, let's go slowly. All right, next slide. The Department of Real Estate is also maintaining the current level of service. I do want to take a moment and talk about our vendor lien program. As you may know, we paused this program to research the effectiveness and identify opportunities for improvement. Since 2019, we've witnessed the issuance of approximately 12 use and occupancy permits. However, we realized the necessity of developing a far more robust method to track the program's overall effectiveness. One particular concern that emerged was the observation that while many certificates were being traded for profit, a significant number of properties remain undeveloped, and that ultimately impacts our tax rolls. This led us to reevaluate our approach, and so we are in the process of implementing some targeted improvements, including a revamped vendor lien sales agreement. All right, and let's move on now to telecommunications. Telecommunications also has a recommended budget that maintains the current level of service. We are continuing to move our own goalposts for the percentage of help desk tickets resolved in 10 business days. In FY '23, we beat our 85% target by 2%, and so for FY '24, we have raised the goal to 90%? Yes, okay. Telecommunications was recognized by our phone partner, Mitel, with the 2024 Mitel Customer Growth and Excellence Award. This award acknowledges and celebrates organization who has achieved remarkable growth and expansion of their business through the strategic implementation of telecommunications solutions. So I'm just taking this opportunity to give a little public congratulations to Simon and his team for receiving this award. Next up, we have the municipal post office. The municipal post office's budget includes an increase of $236,000 for the maintenance and operation of smart lockers and mailing equipment. These will be popping up in five different city buildings over the course of the summer. Think of them as Amazon lockers, but make it government instead of Amazon. Our FY '25 goal is to meter 7 million pieces of mail, acknowledging that we have experienced some customer losses due to the rise of online mailing platforms. We are continuing to pursue innovative partnerships, like our upcoming collaboration with the convention center's Business Center, starting in August. Next, accounts payable. Our accounts payable department is also maintaining the current level of service. In FY '23, they far surpassed their goal of number of days to pay invoices after agency approval by getting that number down to being able to cut checks or make electronic payments in just one day. So far, FY '24 is trending in the same direction. Accounts payable has been working closely with several different city agencies to tackle and resolve issues related to invoices. These efforts have resulted in significant headway in clearing past due invoices, developing strategies to better manage future backlogs, and improving an understanding of the workday system among agencies' fiscal agents. And I wanted to wrap up by showing you something we promised last budget cycle. Launched in 2023, Open Checkbook 2.0 is our public-facing tool that tracks the city's third-party vendor payments. We built this tool soon after the Department of Accounts Payable was placed under the office of the comptroller. Open Checkbook 2.0 allows the public to review Baltimore City's spending by accessing all payments to suppliers, broken down by spend category, years, and other key words. It's already been very helpful to businesses, journalists, and residents. I hope it can be a useful tool for the council as well. And that's it. Thank you very much for giving us this opportunity to talk about our FY '25 budget. This concludes our formal presentation, and I'm happy to take any questions you have at this time.
There we go. Thank you. We've also been joined by Councilman Z. Cohen, 1st District, and Council Vice President, Sharon Green Middleton, 6th District, member of the committee. Council Vice President?
I'm Neil Rickman.
Got it. Councilman Dorsey. Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Comptroller, to your staff. I want to just, first off, thank you for the work on modernizing the portal around the Board of Estimates and making it much more public, transparent, less opaque, you know, just giving residents access to what goes on at the BOE. I think it's extremely important because it's a lot of money, and it's our money, and you all have done an enormous lift to modernize that system, so I really want to thank you for that. I am curious about... You've done a lot in terms of modernization and sort of moving us away from analog and into sort of a more digital approach to the work. What do you all see as the next step in modernizing the office?
Councilman, thank you for the question. The easiest answer, and I would say the lowest hanging fruit, is we have built the structure for what we need for many, if not all, of the processes that the Board of Estimates does. We need to expand the scope and scale for several of them. For example, the existing modernization effort we've done included digitizing past records, and so we now have literally a room full of what were paper files. We now have those online back to 2010. If the money was there, and that's really what it boils down to, we know how to do it. It's just if we could get the resources, we could... We'd like to go back another decade and get all the records in from the, wow, it hurts to say this, but the turn of the century. We could go back to 2000. We'd like to add that to the available files for people to be able to access. We'd also... Open Checkbook 2.0 goes backward... It is adding in everything that happens on a daily basis, but it only goes backwards to the middle of 2022, when we switched over to workday. Once we can figure out how to, and I mean this almost literally, wrest the data from the cold, dead grip of the legacy financial platform, we would like to get past years' information into that as well, so that when people are doing spending analyses, they can look back and see historical data on that past mid-2022. But, I mean, other than continuing to tweak and make BOE submit and the public dashboard as user-friendly as possible, we're pretty much there. We just need to keep course correcting.
Now, again, appreciate all the progress in a pretty short amount of time that you all have made. I'm curious about audits. You know, it's one of these topics. I still come up to people on the street who are like, "When are you guys going to have an audit in city government?" And I'm like, "Well, we do have audits in city government." You know, and what can we do to make that process, I guess, more public, more clear, more... You know, I think, again, you all have done an enormous lift, but again, I think there's like this perception out there that, like, city agencies are not being checked up on, and so do you have some thoughts on sort of modernizing or what a next step could be in terms of getting the audits to be a more publicly connected process and just how to make auditing even stronger?
Again, thank you for the question. I know you'll be unsurprised to know I have thoughts on this. They go in two different directions. One direction is, I have had conversations with, effectively, some of my peers in other cities, and there are places where the audit reports themselves are what I will call purposefully more engaging in the sense of they don't just have auditors on their audit team, they also have people whose specialty is data analytics and data presentation. And so they have, you know, what I would say would be audit reports that look more graphically like something you might see on a webpage already, rather than actual just reports, and this is what we do. So on the one hand, we could look towards expanding our audit staff to include those, you know, those additional fields of expertise. But at the same time, I think the bigger issue, and I think this is something that will resonate with everyone on your side of the table, is how many times have you been at a community meeting or even just talking to an individual at something, and they say, "Well, you know, nobody down at City Hall is ever talking about X." And you know for a fact that people are constantly talking about X. In fact, you yourself stood up at a meeting or a hearing and spoke passionately for 10 minutes about X, but nobody from the media covered it. And if nobody covers it, then the hundreds of thousands of people who have real, like, just lives and are just going about them and only get to see from government what the media shows them, if the media doesn't show it to them, then they think it didn't happen. And so I haven't quite cracked that nut yet. I can tell you, our policy and communications team works really hard with every single audit report that audits comes out with to get that information out to the press, make sure it is, you know, as captivating and interesting as possible, but the media kind of decides for itself what it wants to cover. And if they don't want to cover an in-depth performance review of the Department of Transportation, then it can be very challenging to try to get that information out to the masses. Absent a significant PR budget that I don't think anybody in the Budget Bureau wants to give our office.
No, completely understand and appreciate that. Just, you know, it's one of those things where I just... When perception doesn't meet reality sometimes, you know, it's frustrating, I think, on both sides of this table.
I share your frustration 100%.
So, you know, just, I think, work to continue to think about, and, you know, I think it's a healthy city that is consistently auditing and, you know, holding agencies accountable and helping them get better. And so the more we can give the public access to that in ways that are thoughtful, and I just think, you know, that is always a frustrating sentiment to hear and not reflective of the work that you all are doing. So, again, appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Comptroller. I'll be brief with my questions, piggybacking off my colleagues' comments about audit and modernization. My question is, what is your current staffing level for the audits office?
Forty? Yeah, yeah, forty. Currently, we are staffed at 45 FTEs.
And how many vacancies do you have?
Eleven.
Eleven.
That's a lot.
It is. It is very hard to hire auditors. Yeah.
Here's my next question. Are the salaries comparable with our surrounding jurisdictions?
I'm tempted to turn around and see Tandy's expression.
I just want to ask a fair question.
You know what? You know what? Just out of fairness, I'm going to turn around. Sure, yeah, come on up. Just push the button on the right.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board of the committee of the... I mean, committee, my name is Tandy Mung. I'm the deputy city auditor. To answer your question, I do not think that our salary is competitive. I think last year, in calendar year 2023, there was a study from the Department of Human Resources, and we recognized that our salary is not competitive. That's one of the reasons that our budget is increased by 7%. That includes the 4% inflation rate adjustment this year.
So we are... We're trying to make our salaries more competitive, but we're not there yet, and that's just the truth. And honestly, I, you know, I don't know how other city agencies respond to this question, but it's not just us. You know, this is a problem that city government struggles with.
No, I just had a question. It's an intriguing exercise in efficiencies, too, because there are 36 agencies that you have to do these audits for biannually. And then I think about the complexity of each agency, and my question is, have we thought about obtaining outside auditors, such as what City Schools does every year? And City Schools contracts an outside auditor to perform audit duties, and then they have an internal audits office with a smaller staff. The question is, with the vacancies, should you be looking to get that assistance from an outside auditing staff to actually help you get the capacity that you need to make those very nice reports that you like? Right? I mean, I'm just asking this question because it is something that I've learned from working in a quasi-agency, that that's an efficiency that was created, and having those outside auditors helped us create efficiencies in spending control as well as processes and actually using expertise to change those processes?
We actually do use an outside auditor to assist our office and the finance department when they work together to do the single audit every year and the act for... My suspicion right now, but I'm willing to talk to Tandy and Josh and have them make some inquiries, my suspicion is that if it could be done by outsourcing cheaper than what we're already paying... We've used temporary... We've used temps to fill in. I am concerned about what it would mean if we could actually get the same amount of service by contracting out that we are getting from having too few actual paid auditors. That would imply that somehow people are willing to work for auditing services for less than they're willing to work for us. When we pay an outside auditor, we're paying the hourly fee for the people who work there and presumably some measure of profit for the firm. And I raise this issue because I recently had a substantial conversation at the Board of Estimates with the health commissioner over the fact that they do contract out regularly for some positions in terms of health staff, but it was upon, like, one of the things that came out of that conversation was, that only really makes sense when you have some positions where people don't want to have a full-time, ongoing position doing that thing, and they're looking for flexibility because of some other aspect of their lifestyle. In our case, I don't think that would be an advantage.
No. You know, I'm just thinking about it because I think about the internal audits for City Schools that has a small staff of eight people, and then there's budget analysts. So I think about this in a scale that I see that we have, and I hate to say this about finance and then the controls office, there's a lot of bodies that I see at City Schools get the same amount of work done in a short amount of time with a smaller team, right? So I'm thinking, how have we thought about efficiencies? Because I can tell you that every year, I knew budget closeout was at a certain period. We had reconciliation, and then after reconciliation, we had external auditors coming in to review all the books for all 150 school campuses, as well as all the expenses at City Schools. We had a report that was delivered by March while they were voting on the current budget to make sure those efficiencies were implemented, that were found, and the findings were made. And then, then, we went through that same cycle again and again and again, but it was at a cost that was less than $2 million a year, right? But we had an internal team that was doing the day-to-day work, too. I think, so I'm just wondering, it's like, have we explored a model where you can get the people... You can increase the salaries for the people that do the nice, pretty things, as well as getting outside help to help you be able to create a cycle that allows you to keep up? Because sometimes your biennials aren't on time, right? And that's because of a lot of things that happen, right? It's a reality from agencies responding to the...
Yeah, actually, I'm going to cut you off there to say that one of the things, and we report this at the biennial commission meetings, is when we are not able to do a report on time, that is either because the agency didn't get us information in a timely fashion, or almost equally likely, we finished our report and asked for a management response, and we didn't get a management response in a timely fashion, and so we delayed the response to give them the courtesy of including their response. Before I say anymore, I'm going to turn it back over to Tandy, who had more to add.
Thank you. Staffing shortages is not only at the city, it is nationwide, and there are a couple of reasons. Number one is just salary is not competitive. Number two, fewer people are going to school for accounting or audit. That's another reason. And the third reason is because of the hiring process. It is longer than, you know, anticipated and complication in the hiring processes as well, including the job descriptions. That's one of the reasons that having challenges to get staffing for accounting and finance that is everywhere. Even last year, Wall Street Journal talked about accounting shortages, CBA shortages in the nation. in the nation. Department of Audits, we do financial audit, uh, which we, uh, co-source with the local accounting firm. Uh, in addition to the, um, uh, annual, uh, financial audit, we do the performance audit. Outsourcing to the, uh, outsourcing, uh, performance audit to, um, consultants or other accounting firm, that can create the risk of independence because, you know, uh, internal audit department, which, you know, um, Department of Audits, we are more independent rather than having business with the city. So, I think that outsourcing, uh, can be a, um, issue for the independent, auditors' independence in the future. Um, I think that's all I wanted to respond to, Bill.
The, the, the only thing I will say as a, as a wrap-up for this particular question is, um, that the response of outsourcing the jobs to private, um, accounting firms because the, the city makes it hard to fill vacancies through uncompetitive salaries and, um, uh, a, let's just say, challenging HR process. To say, "Well, then, let's just hire, um, uh, an accounting staffing firm," is kind of like DGS saying, "Well, since we don't get enough money to maintain our buildings, we should stop owning property and we should just start renting more private buildings to put city offices in, because private landlords do a better job of maintaining their buildings than we do." You wouldn't want to hear DGS say that, right? Like, and if you, and if DGS did say that, you'd be a little concerned. And I say that because a previous head of DGS said that in a meeting. And I, my response afterwards was, "I understand your frustration, because from DGS's perspective, they keep asking finance for more money to take care of the buildings, and finance doesn't give it to them because there are other things that finance needs to also spend money on." And so, DGS gets frustrated. And my response is, "I understand you're frustrated, but the answer to the problem of 'we're not good at maintaining our buildings' is to get better at maintaining our buildings, not give up maintaining our buildings and do something else." I, I hear your, I hear your point. I'm saying that I think that the solution to this is to get better at filling the vacancies, because it's not just a matter of, um, of being able to meet our current obligations. We're meeting our current obligations. There's more we could be doing if we were properly staffed and funded. And, um, for every person who comes up to you on the street and says, "Hey, how come you don't audit this or don't audit that?" Trust me, I get three of them, and people are constantly asking us to, like, "Why don't you audit this? And why don't you audit that?" And I try to explain to them, and the chairman knows, because he sits at the Commission Meetings, "We have a plan. Every year, we plan out. These are the audits that we can do." And I would love to have the resources so that we could leave some blank spaces in there, so if something comes up, we can be like, "Well, hey, how come we didn't audit the, you know, opioid epidemic response? Like, why didn't we do that?" Well, now, now, like, if, if we had the resources, I would love to be able to just go to audits and say, "Oh, I'm sorry. I, I should stop my answer here because I think Councilman Dorsey has a question."
I wasn't done yet, but I'll yield to Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you. I, my staff asked me if you could please provide an updated list of controller-controlled properties and their expected mowing schedule.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want, I want to add something to, um, to your question. I do want to, I think audits have not given themselves enough pat on the back. Uh, we have, with limited resources, still maintain the level of audits. They've done it even with vacancies. Uh, one of the things they've been intentional about this past year is growing their own. They have promoted, in order, some of those vacancies are vacancies of staff who've been promoted. And so, they've been able to promote their staff, maintain, um, uh, ensure they have adequate education to move up and move on. They've added additional competencies such as, um, uh, additional IT and tech competencies, uh, for tech, I, for auditing IT-type issues that they didn't have before. They've also made, um, great use of local colleges and universities to have interns through the Controllers' Fellowships. Um, and possibly, I think we've also hired at least, um, hired three people who've come through the temp process. And so, what's happening is that they've grown their own, they've moved up orders, which means that they have vacancies in some of their audit ones, audit twos, and that's make, that makes it a little easier to recruit from colleges or temporary programs or internships. And so, they've done, um, they've been really creative in thinking about staffing issues as they work, their artists work on teams, um, to perform audits. And so, they've been really creative this past year, um, anticipating vacancies, uh, because of the, what's going on across the land, not just in Baltimore, uh, but maintaining the level of competency and making sure that audits, uh, are going out with the same high level of audit support and audit knowledge, so.
Yeah. I just want to clarify, this is not an attack on the vacancies, right?
Oh, no, no, we, we definitely agree.
I'm just, I'm just letting you know from my experience as a person who served on the Joint Audits Committee with a state senator, and looking at the efficiencies of using private auditors with our state auditors to get the nuts and bolts of things, that there are opportunities where we, as a city, could come in and use that private sector to build that training module, to get the people where we need to be, to get the pretty sexy reports that you guys want to put on websites. I'm just saying that you may have a difficulty filling those positions right now, but, in that meantime, what capacity could you use in reusing those funds temporarily to get you new capacity for your existing staff? I say that because I came from a nearly two-billion-dollar organization in the, and I hate to say this out loud, the city of Baltimore is very antiquated in terms of our practices when looking at national trends, right? And I think that we tend to do, uh, a carousel of, "Yeah, but we're Baltimore, right?" But we haven't tried something new. I'm just trying to say, maybe we need to think about something new or creating the expert teams with Sigma Six or Tiger Teams to help you become efficient, to train your staff in those core competencies that allow you to do it, right? Because next, right now, we're looking at, and this is from just talking to colleagues, they're looking at AI to help us with doing audits now, right? So, how do we build the capacity with AI to do audits as well to create those efficiencies?
Yeah.
So, I'm just, I'm just saying that there's opportunities. I just wanted to see if you explored those opportunities. This is not an attack.
Oh, no, no, I didn't think you were attacking. I just want to definitely, um, uh, hopefully, um, state that they are. They have been working at creative ways, um, to address, even in spite of, um, the challenges of, of staffing, they've used it as an opportunity to think differently about how they go approach audits, so.
Yeah. So, my next question is related to controller-controlled properties and the funding that, the funding that finance has put aside for you to actually maintain those properties. The number of properties in proportion to the maintenance that's needed for is, I wouldn't call that a fair ratio. I would say like six hundred to one, right, is what you actually need. Um, so, my question to finance is, have we explored any opportunities to give them more financial support, um, in terms of mowing grasses, maintaining properties? I'll put it this way. I have had a retaining wall that was controller-owned, that they could, had no formal way of paying to repair, that we had to go to the Department of Transportation to fund. I think that in moving forward in terms of building their budget for these, um, issues related to their properties, we need to have a cross-functional team looking at what their current need is and how we can fund some of those supports right now for those properties, because some of those properties are actually valuable properties that we can get up for sale. And if we invest the money in to make them at least suitable for someone else to take over, we can again get them off their books, and then we have some revenue coming to the city. That's my next, really, it's my suggestion to the administration and finance. You got that, Rita? Um, suggesting to finance and administration to look at cross-functionally across city agencies and how we can use existing maintenance funds to support controller-operated properties or in their control, so that we can look at for sale portions of sale. Case in point, I'll give an example of properties that are currently listed on buying into Baltimore, right? That are controller-controlled, that have had, as, and this is speaking for, on behalf of West Baltimore. Project Corvus is a great thing. I have a lot of vacant lots that they have that need to be mowed, and we need to figure out a way to start using the land that we have in West Baltimore in a way to get it off our books and then to some productive use. I'll put it that way. And I think that we need to work with the Controls Office across multiple agencies to see how we can support that portfolio that they had to get a number of those properties off their books and out of the city's books and portfolio. That's my suggestion.
Noted. Thank you.
Just quickly, since we're talking about properties, securing, I brought this question to General Services. Securing school buildings while we're, you're going through negotiations and so on, and how they are, you know, the copper is being removed. The, the newest one in my district is MLK, and that, you know, take the process and turning over the keys, and, you know, they're still going through negotiations. And, um, how do you, how does your office play a role in trying to be a partner in helping to, uh, resolve the problem?
Uh, again, thank you for the question. Um, in a, in a, in a, in a situation like that, our role is largely supportive and in, um, in some cases, uh, supportive of the councilperson for that district in that we, uh, you know, we may interface between DGS and the community if there are community concerns about the state of the building. But, I mean, even, like, even in the, the properties that Councilman Torrance was referring to, um, when, when we are mowing, like, when we have property that needs mowing, vacant lots and such, our office isn't doing it. It, what he's referring to is money that finance allows us so that we can transfer funds to DOT or DPW or DGS, you know, one of the actual operational agencies that will then go out and have it mowed. We don't, we don't have staff that go out and do that kind of work. Similarly, with the, um, you know, the, the former school buildings that are, you know, hopefully being repurposed to be, uh, to be new amenities in their communities again. We work on negotiation. We work with the, with, in terms of the Office of Real Estate does, um, leases and handles disposition, but we don't take care of the buildings. That's still under the, um, that's still under the responsibility of usually DGS.
So, you don't feel there's a need for being engaged with those other agencies?
Oh, we, I mean, that's what I'm saying. We support them, like, like, and I'm, I'm not sure if there's a particular.
Are they part of a meeting, or is your office part of a meeting to just know updates of?
That's an interesting question. I don't know that there is any type of, um, sub-cabinet for that, but, um, let me turn it over.
And I bring that up, I bring that up because, you know, DGS had mentioned that, that's something that they are pursuing, if not already doing.
Uh, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Um, Eric Evans, Department of Real Estate. Uh, as far as the, um, interaction, we have a weekly meeting with DGS, and they give us an update on the conditions of the various properties. And when we do, unfortunately, we have had instances like the MLK incident. The, the, really what ends up happening is maybe the developer, whomever we have an LDA with, they will reach out to us. And my staff is very proactive about immediately contacting DGS. In one instance that happened recently, um, I'd say DGS was probably out there within the hour, and the developer was witnessing it being, the building being stripped. And we, we, my staff instructed the developer to go to a safe place, and we will get, and we notified both the, the police and DGS.
Okay. Good. That's, um, important information. To, it's always important to have that engagement so that every agency is updated on their role in trying to get that building taken care of for the owner. So, thank you for that information.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, one simple question, and then one a little bit more complicated. Um, the ACFR for 2023, when is that coming out? Was the KFOR, now is the?
The AFIR?
AFSPR, ASPR.
We have done our job, but we are waiting on the, um, the, the accounting firm and the Department of Finance to come up with a resolution for the issue date.
Okay. So, it's not in your hands anymore?
It's not, it's not in our hands.
It is where in finance?
Finance and account, Department of Finance and the accounting firm that we hired. SB and company.
SB and company is the.
SB and company is the private firm that, um, is retained by, uh, the Finance Department to work with audits and their people in accounting and get that work done. Um, yeah, we've done what we can do, and now we're waiting for them to resolve their issue date.
Finance?
Yes, uh, we can follow up with you as needed. Um, I know that there is a, uh, draft copy currently available, but I don't believe it's been finalized, so can we, uh, follow up you, with you after?
Yep, that sounds good. Thank you. Um, I want to go back to the vendor lien program. Um, you know, it's, uh, I understand that you're doing an analysis of it, um, to kind of figure out what's the best way to move forward. In the meantime, you know, certificates have expired. Now, you've got a lot more because, you know, there's some properties that didn't sell a tax sale, so they come to you. So, we're not making any headway on, um, you know, our vacancy goals as a result, although I know that there were some challenges with the program itself. So, do you have a timeline of when you're going to be finished with your analysis and that either the program comes back online or you've recreated something?
Okay, so, the, where we are right now, we have a pretty good idea of how we would like the program to be revamped. What we are doing now is we are getting input from people who use the program to make sure that in our efforts to make it better, we don't make it harder to use for the people who are trying to use it properly to reinvest in Baltimore.
Mm-hmm.
So, we are literally reaching out to individual small developers and community-based groups. Um, and in fact, we got another name today. I don't know if Celeste had a chance to share it with you, of somebody that we should, um, be running this by.
I have one, too. I'll send you.
Pardon?
I have somebody.
Yeah. Um, but I would, I would say, um, not unlike the comment that I made about uh, the public dashboard for BOE Submit, um, if you have specific suggestions that you wanted to make, please, by all means, make them, and we will try to incorporate them into the, the final project, the final product.
Right. So, it sounds like you're still in the assessment, you're, you're, you've done the assessment, you've come up with your strategy, you're getting feedback on your strategy, and then, um, you'll make some adjustments as needed. Are we thinking end of the calendar year? I'm just trying to get a timeline.
We're, we're shooting for beginning of this, this coming year.
Ah, okay, great, okay.
Yeah. Oh, God, yes, no. We're not, we're not planning on taking the rest of calendar twenty-two.
Okay, that's good news. That's good news. Um, and then, uh, just echoing my colleagues', um, you know, uh, frustration on the vacant lots and hoping that we can come up with a solution for those, whether it's through the bind-to-be more or whether. to be more or whether it's through other means.
Well, as far as vacant lots, what we are, at, at the moment, we are going to, we have approximately 1,100 lots, properties that are coded to Department of Real Estate.
Yeah.
And we will be placing those on the Buy-In to Be More site. And we're doing that as sort of a stopgap to get them out there and available while we are developing, we're talking about developing a program that had gotten mention. I think, I think my predecessor had started something and it got paused on a way to dispose of these lots efficiently. And I, I believe the, the comptroller and the commissioner are also looking at ways to help offset some of the transaction costs associated with, so while we, you could get a lot for, you know, low cost, there are transaction fees that I believe the comptroller would like, if, if it's a homeowner purchasing a lot next to them, that they could get the lot without-
But isn't it, isn't it going to be part of the fixed price or no?
It's going to be part of the fixed pricing, but even part of that has transaction fees.
Right.
Which, which, and, and you can, you, minds can differ on whether or not that's, the fixed pricing model is perfect when it comes to smaller, community-based developers.
That's correct.
But I think we can all agree that when we're talking about individual owner-occupiers who are being encouraged to take responsibility for a currently vacant lot that is, just happens to be next to their property, being told that you can have this lot for a dollar is one thing, but being told that you can have this lot for a dollar and $2,200 worth of transactional fees that the city charges to cover its own costs in making sure that the transaction is properly recorded, that can have a chilling effect on somebody's willingness to undertake that. And what the Housing Commissioner and I discussed is the, two of us, you know, together tag-teaming philanthropy and looking for a small pot of money that we can use to offset the city's costs in moving those properties into the hands of, of private owners and also putting them back on the tax rolls.
Right.
Which would be a long-term financial gain for the city and no longer them being properties that we're responsible for maintaining. And if we can, if we can do that, I think it would be a good thing. It, you know, we just haven't gotten the chance to actually do it yet.
Yeah, I think that that's, I will be talking about the, the fixed pricing during the hearing next week and I've said a lot about it, but I just was clear about, I wanted to just figure out what your strategy was going to be on these lots. I would also recommend talking to Baltimore Greenspace and, because they've been working with stewards of land and trying to figure that out as well, so. But I think that, you've heard my colleagues loud and clear that, you know, it's just not acceptable to just kind of leave them there. So I think that that's something to think about.
I think Councilman Torrance would like you to yield some time to him.
I will when I'm ready to do so. I was just about to end my comments, but anyway, I think that that's something that we need to really think through. So thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to piggyback. I, I think we need to be like other cities. If we're giving it to a private landowner, we should do it just as though we repair a sidewalk. We put in your property tax bill and we spread it on a certain number of years. I think that's something that we currently have in our financial systems that we could actually explore. So if it's $2,200 in transaction fees over four years, as though you were repairing my, my alley and I had to pay for it over four years through my property tax bill, that might be a way that we provide equity for people to actually afford this. I just want to offer that as an option to finance and the comptroller's office. We do it for all the other repairs. We recoup that cost through the property tax bills. I think we should think about that for this program as well.
That's an, that's a very interesting idea. I will, I will say that might end up being the compromise between what I wanted to do, which was just have the city eat the cost, knowing that the city is going to make that money back in property taxes over X number of years. And the alternative, which I agreed to pursue, which is to go out and find a third party to pay for it. My suspicion, but I'm willing to, you know, have a longer conversation about this, my suspicion is whether it's spread out over a number of years or not, people are going to be less interested in agreeing to take the property if they're told it costs them a couple thousand dollars to do it, no matter how that money is spread out or billed. My, my suspicion is that people will be less likely to do it. Honest to God, I'm not sure that everybody will do it even if we just said, it doesn't cost you anything, please just take it. There will still be people who will be like, mm, okay. But I, I, I think it's definitely worth, that, like I said, that might end up being the compromise with, with finance in terms of how do we get the cost down to something that people are willing to accept?
Mr. Comptroller, thank you.
Thank you.
You and your team are doing an outstanding job.
Thank you very much. On behalf of my team, I accept their, the praise due to them.
Good man. We are now in recess until tomorrow morning at 9:00 a.m. Thank you.